Call to order the Planning Commission meeting of October 4th. Can we have the roll call?
Chair Hutt.
Here.
Vice Chair Dennison.
Here.
Commissioners Cottolato.
Here.
DeSai.
Here.
Friarman Hunt.
Hebsner.
Here.
And Spears.
And if the city attorney can report out from our closed session?
Yes, thank you. This doesn't sound like it's on. Is it?
It is.
Okay. Okay. Yes, thank you. The Planning Commission met in closed session this evening with legal counsel to receive a briefing on a matter of anticipated litigation, and no action was taken. And that is the end of my report, Chair Hutt.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from our meeting on September 20th. Does anyone have any comments or corrections?
Look good to me.
No exceptions.
Oh, good.
I'm good. Motion?
Move that we approve said minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll move on to audience comments. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the Planning Commission on items not on the agenda, you can come forward. We actually have an audience tonight, and this is new for us for a while, so...
Thank you all for being here.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairperson Hutt and Commissioners. I'm Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. I would like to thank you all for your volunteerism in serving the Planning Commission. It takes up so much time and a high level of expertise to study and study to assess the projects that come before you. You are the gatekeepers for keeping Sierra Madre such a unique place. But I am here tonight to invite you and all Sierra Madreans to the annual barbecue of Preserve Sierra Madre at the home of Barry and Judy Gold. It's on Sunday at 4:00 PM. The Preserve Sierra Madre group has been observing past planned projects and offering constructive advice for building and zoning projects. We continue our vigilance to ensure projects coming before the Planning Commission meet our goals of preserving Sierra Madre for responsible growth and development. Please come to learn what we are all about. We're not no growth, but we are responsible growth in our town. And come meet your neighbors and enjoy some great food. If you can make it, please call Judy Gold at (355) 3222. That's (355) 3222. I thank you, and I hope to see you all on Sunday, and her address is 441 Ramona. And thank you once again for all that you do. It takes an awful lot of time, I know. Thank you.
Ramona. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. That'll do it for audience comments. Next, we'll move on to our first and only public hearing, which is Hillside Development Permit 1202, Conditional Use Permit 1209. Do we have a staff presentation?
We have a staff presentation, and we do have a PowerPoint presentation, so you may want to adjust your chairs. Also, I'd like to let you know that the applicant will also be providing a PowerPoint presentation this evening. So the property is located at 630 Baldwin Court, Lot 22, shown in red. It's part of a larger subdivision, a total of 29 lots. These are views of the property, looking southeast and looking east towards the adjacent residence above the lot. You can also see there's a grouping of California secamore trees in this location, and not visible in this view is an oak tree towards the back of the property. Additional photographs showing various views. In this case, on the site here is looking northwards, also towards the McComber Cabin and the Carter Barn. And again, additional views looking south. The site here, as you can see, is being, is cleared at this point, and you see again the grouping of secamore trees as you head up the street. The commission will be utilizing the following information to evaluate each of the projects that will be moving forward, including this one, the Hillside Management Zone, the Stonegate Design Guidelines, and the settlement agreements, which pretty much prescribe the maximum floor area that is allowed for the various parcels, the placement of the buildings over the slopes, the parking requirement and height restrictions. The applicant is requesting to construct a two-story, 3160 square foot, single-family home. There is a 655 square foot full basement under the building, and that is excluded from the 3,160 square feet of floor area. And pursuant to City of Sierra Madre Municipal Code, the construction of a single-family dwelling unit in the Hillside Management Zone requires approval of a Hillside Development Permit, and that is one of the findings that you will be making for this project. Also pursuant to Condition of Approval Number 159, if the track mapped, any development which can be seen from the location of the McComber Cabin, Carter Barn, or the Willis Estate is subject to a Conditional Use Permit. The project is fully compliant with all of the project criteria, including lot coverage, building height, gross floor area, and building setbacks, parking requirements. There was also a neighborhood analysis that has been completed, and it used a sample of 100 properties. In this case, the requirement was a 1,000-foot radius from the subject site, and what that determined was that the average floor area within that radius of those noticed properties was 2,217 square feet. Also, the applicant also looked at the median floor area, which was 2,074 square feet. The average floor area of the top one-third of the properties was 3,126 square feet within that sphere. Specifically for this project, the proposed floor area of 2,672 square feet is greater than the average by 455 square feet. It's less than the average of the top one-third by 454 square feet, and it's greater than the median by 598 square feet. Overall, the size of the proposed project is consistent with the top one-third of the In terms of the proposed project, the commission is looking at the Balkan mass, and some of the approaches that the applicant has used is to utilize a below-grade basement. There are single-story elements that face the street, recessing the second floor of the building. The architect is proposing a contemporary craftsman bungalow style of building. It does have gabled asphalt shingled roof, hardy board siding and trim, metal-clad wood windows and doors. Landscaping is utilizing drought-tolerant plat material. It is retaining a small grove of California secamores and also retaining a Quercus agrofolia or Coast live oak towards the back of the property. They are utilizing low-impact, or will be required to use low-impact development and water-efficient landscape in compliance with that ordinance. This is the conceptual site plan of the property. There's one den or bedroom, we count as a bedroom, on the ground floor. It's utilizing the great room concept. There's a two-car garage also that faces the street. This is the conceptual landscape plan, showing the grove of the secamore grove here, the Coast live oak. An arborist report was prepared for the project, and they identified a number of protective measures specific to the oak tree and the secamore trees, and we pulled out a few items here, which include, includes the installation of protective fencing around the drip line of the trees, prohibiting the use of heavy equipment within the drip line, avoiding continuous trenching, and the utilization of grade beams as necessary to bridge over existing roots. Also, to preserve roots two inches in diameter or larger to avoid damaging those roots. Also, required supervision of an arborist should be on-site when pruning the roots or branches to ensure that it conforms to the standards. Also, to avoid adding fill material and installation of irrigation within the drip line and planting a ground cover within five feet of the tree trunks. The contractor is also required to protect the roots, bark trunk limbs, and branches and leaves of protected trees from damage during the construction process. Again, a larger view with a first-floor plan. As you can see, the first floor is 1,632 square feet, and it also has a 420 square foot, two-car garage. The interior circulation shows a stairwell that leads both to the below-grade basement as well as to the second floor. There's also access via a stairwell and exterior stairs to, into a stairwell, light well of the basement area. This is the second floor, 1,108 square feet. Master bedroom, two additional bedrooms that share a one-bathroom facility. There's a 655 square foot basement. Here, you can see both the interior access and also the stairwell access into the recreation room below. And again, the 655 square feet is excluded from the total area calculation per floor Depicted is the conceptual roof plan. There are a couple of points that I wanted to make in terms of the roof plan on the, here facing the front facade, there's a three-and-twelve and a four-and-twelve pitch, so the symmetry is a little off there, and I'll make some additional points with that. And also, about a 43-foot expanse of a three-and-twelve pitched roof, which leads up to the ridge line here, and I'll make additional comments later on in the presentation regarding that as well. Sections of the building and the existing, and the topography adjacent. The building elevations. This is the east elevation or the rear elevation on the top. North elevation. Here, you can actually see the steeply sloping roof in this location, very prominent. Again, as I pointed out, this is the street-facing elevation or the west-facing elevation. Here, you can see the three-and-twelve and four-and-twelve roof pitches, which are slightly asymmetrical. You see that condition again here as well. A rendering of the front facade of the building. Again, showing the asymmetry of the gabled roof facing the street. Material board, which I have passed amongst the commissioners. If you want to see it again, I have it in my possession again. 3D model. As viewed from the southwest, looking eastward. A view from the north looking southeast, and also an aerial view. And again, we have a photomontage with the rendered proposal. Some of the design concerns that staff pointed out in the staff report included, the program appeared to be designed more for internal circulation than looking at exterior, some of the exterior elevations, and we suggested that more emphasis should be placed on the external design elements to create a sense of balance and proportion. One of those comments was specific to the second-floor gables on the west and south building elevations, depicting a four-and-twelve and three-and-twelve roof pitch with asymmetrical window placement. Number two, street-facing elevation with continuous 43-foot roof pitch that faced the front facade of the building. We felt that the scale of the roof is designed to accommodate internal floor plan, to minimize the appearance of the garage door as a dominant feature of the structure, to remove proposed planting within the drip line of the existing oak tree, and to ensure that the concrete light well, access stairway, and garden walls and fences are painted or stained utilizing an earth-toned color that blends with the background of the hillside. These are the Hillside Development Permit findings. The argument for each of the findings, whether it meets or does not meet, the findings is included in your staff report, and the Conditional Use Permit findings. And this, again, the CUP findings are specific to views of the McComber Cabin and the Carter Barn, and to ensure that there is adequate differentiation between those structures, the historic resources, and any new development which includes this property as well. The alternatives before the commission to approve the Hillside Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit pursuant to Resolution 18-09, to approve the project with modifications, deny stating why the findings cannot be made, or to continue the project and provide staff and the applicant with direction. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions to continue Hillside Development Permit 1202 and Conditional Use Permit 1209, to provide more information consistent with staff comments and Planning Commission direction. And I'm available to answer any questions. At this point, it's up to the commission. Did you want the applicant to make their presentation?
I think this probably makes more sense while we're in PowerPoint mode, that we go ahead and get all this in. If the applicant would like to come up and make their presentation, and then we can field questions.
My name is Everardo Garcia, and I'm with L.C.R.A. Architects, and I'm here to talk about our project and give you hopefully a little bit more information, and I'll be available as well for any questions you might have. This is our site plan, and one you've already seen, and what I wanted to just talk about on this slide is just to show how our building falls within the envelope that's required by the city. We are meeting the required site setbacks as well as the minimum 25-foot setback. Now, our setback goes up to the front porch, which then we have an additional five-foot, nine feet from the porch to the face of the building. So the house is pushed back a bit more. Now, you've probably seen the story poles out on the site. One note about that is, as they were put up, they, the points they used are the edge of the eaves of the building. So you just have to take that into consideration. Our eaves are about two foot six, so that does tend to also push, the way it's set up right now, push the building forward a little bit more than it is.
And the story poles include the porch, right?
The porch is, yes, they do show the edge of the porch. And one other thing, the sidewalk is part of the property, so the property actually begins at the curb, and that's where the 25 feet is taken from.
So is, can you go back then? So does your drawing show the sidewalk?
Yes. Right in there. So this is just conceptual site plan, similar to one you've seen before, and this is our site plan. What I did want to mention about this is, last time we presented, we presented our project, our square footage was 3,512 square feet. We listened to your comments, we went back, worked on the plans, and so we did rework our plans, and were able to reduce the building to 3,160. And I wanted to walk you through some of the changes we did in order to, to reduce the square footage as well as reduce the massing of the building. On the ground floor, what we did was we organized the floor plan, made it more of an open concept plan, and by doing that, we eliminated some additional circulation and made it a much more open space facing the rear of the yard. We do have a slight, a small little covered porch that comes out of the dining room, and then we have our front porch that becomes a nice welcoming element to the house. On the second floor is where we did a lot of the changes. We ended up eliminating one bedroom and a bathroom that we had on the second floor as well as some additional circulation. We ended up also moving the laundry that we showed above to the ground floor. In doing that, our footprint for the second floor reduced greatly, and in doing so also reduced the mass of the building. We pushed a lot of the mass towards the rear, allowing the front to be a more gentle slope from the street and build up to the back of the house. And then, as part of the reduction of mass and square footage on the upper floors, we did utilize the basement as an opportunity to introduce a great room and bring back some of that square footage and allow kind of a entertainment space for hopefully the family that would come here in the future. This is access via an exterior, exterior stair and access house. The roof, we also worked on trying to simplify the roof. As part of the style of the architecture, we want it to be very straightforward, though we did end up having a little fun with that. But as you can see, the overall roof is very simple. It was mentioned that we have this large slope, and I will show with the elevation. The reason for that slope is to try to eliminate the larger mass and the second-story feeling from the street side. We could have broken that roof, and then you would start seeing more of the second floor. By doing so, all this area really is just, a lot of it is attic space, which we don't, When we come to the elevations, again, we did listen to your comments, and we revised the architecture of the proposed house, originally being a Monterey-style home. We looked at having, doing more of a contemporary craftsman bungalow, which fits more within the typical homes in Sierra Madre. What we did with the roof, from the porch on backward, this is where we have that long slope, and we feel it helps to break down the second-story mass, which is this here. If we were to break this up, we would start seeing part of the second floor, and we feel this gives you a more gentle slope. It minimizes its impact, and really, the second floor is only seen as this part. On the side as well, we played with the forms to create some interest and break up the massing of the building. And I think this is a good time to discuss some of the design comments and address the comment in terms of the asymmetry here. Actually, we played with this, and we continued that on the side elevations. Since this, we feel this is more of a contemporary take on the bungalow, we had an opportunity to play with the form, play with the asymmetry here, move the windows to the side a little, which really is a take on the eclectic nature of the homes in Sierra Madre. They're a little quirky, and that's what makes them interesting. And this is something that we could, if we wanted to center and put the window in the middle, but it made it more stagnant. What it would do is, the window would be in the center, it almost centers on the garage, and it becomes just a very stacked feel. This creates a more interesting composition with the entry door, garage, and the window above. The colors on the house, what we're proposing, are also very typical of the craftsman homes. We're using very rich, warm tones, olives, warm browns, which are very typical with the style, as well as fitting in with the surrounding neighborhood. The other item I wanted to address is the garage impact. There's a comment about being able to reduce the impact of the garage. Now, what we've done is the porch is set back 25 feet from the street. From that, the garage, and really at this point, where... From that, the garage, and really at this point, we're at 33 feet, six inches, and a little bit more on this edge because of the curve of the street. That pushes that element further back, so the first thing you read really is the porch. Now, what we have also done with the garage is introduce some nice carriage doors, some texture with the stone, and make it more of an element while still making it secondary to the front entry. And then these are the other sides of the house, again utilizing typical elements of the style, but then having a little fun and taking a contemporary take on them by having the asymmetry continue on the sides. On the elevation, these really just show, besides what the elevations look like, how the building is conforming to the encroachments that we have on the side and the front, allowing the building to basically step up and eliminate any large masses on the side elevations especially. These are just some sections you've seen before showing how the basement works coming down, and you have the small basement here. It's tucked away behind the building and the side yard, so it's very tucked away from view. And here, you can see how the slope of the roof kind of starts building up the building from the street. You really perceive it as a very low, two-story house with a lot of roof. You've seen this as well, just showing how the existing sycamore trees add a more, how should I say, permanent feel to these buildings. It feels like they've been there a little bit more since you have these existing large-scale trees that makes them fit into the site. Just, again, the same images we saw before. One thing to note as well about our site is that our building actually tucks in because of the slope on the street. Our building pad is a little lower towards the upper portion of the street, so the house does start to tuck away into the site, helping to minimize the feel of the building and the massing. Just some more images of how the building will be seen. Again, here, you start seeing the fact that the building is tucked away, not making a large impact on the existing neighborhood. The other item I wanted, there were two items on the design concerns that I wanted to address. One was the removing of planting under the existing tree, existing oak tree. That's something we can easily do. Landscape would definitely be able to move it if that's a concern. The existing tree actually is located, not on our property, but the drip line is actually covered into our property, so what we could do is move some of those plantings if that's a concern. And then, the comment about having the materials of the stairs and the wall for the basement to be in more naturalistic earth tone colors, definitely, that would be what we would like as well, since we want it to become part of the landscape and disappear.
Can you go back a slide or two that has the perspective of that? Because you can see this one, there's another one that's closer up. It shows it as a solid wall.
Yes, unfortunately, that's just an aspect of the rendering. It just shows the line of where the fence would be, but in reality, if, I don't know if I have the plan here, but in your set, we have the wall plan, which shows that that fence actually will be a wrought iron fence, so it'll be very see-through, and you won't see the impact of the fence like we show it here. This is mostly just to show that there is a fence there. Now, our landscape architect could not join us today, but she did give me a statement, if you'll allow me to read. She just wanted to talk a little about how she approached the design. And she goes, "Lot 22 is situated along Baldwin Court, the main road of the new development. There's a mature sycamore tree on the front, on the right-hand side, which will be protected in place and preserved. Since this area of Sierra Madre is a fire zone and will have to get the fuel mod approval, the plant selection consists of fire-resistant plant material approved by the fire department as well as low water and native plants. The design intent was to have a native drought-tolerant, non-flammable planting scheme. We placed the plant material very loosely, not to disturb the view, but also to comply with the fire department guidelines. We used as rich as possible plant palette consisting of trees, shrubs, and ground cover. We screened the retaining walls and created a flow of color and texture which will complement and enhance the beautiful architecture of this new home." Now with that, I will step aside. If you have any questions, I'm definitely available.
Do we have questions for the applicant or staff? You'd want to start over here. Bill, do you have any questions?
No, good, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I do.
This one's yours.
Oh, yeah.
I'll steal your. All moved over. The question I have for staff is that, did the applicant receive the conditions of approval?
Yes.
Okay, so they've received the requirement from you that says, "Use of gray water system for landscaping irrigation in compliance of water-efficient landscape ordinance." So they're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Joe, do you have any questions?
I do. I have three I'd like to ask of the applicant right now. Forgive me if I missed them, and they are on the plan, but I'd like to find out about the following. First of all, there's some hardscape under the drip line of the sycamore at the southwest corner. Is that, are you going to commit to a permeable pavement there, or what's that situation?
I believe the landscape architect has looked at providing some permeable pavement as part of the plan. I could check to see if it's in that particular area, but I would think anything around the trees, that would be a concern for her as well.
Was it addressed, like in the Arborist's report?
Offhand, I don't know if that issue was addressed.
Okay. Yeah, I'm concerned about that, and also the amount of planting under the sycamore tree that is indicated on the, indicated on the landscape plan, is that, I'm not sure whether it's appropriate to have that much planting, like under oaks.
Right.
Can we find out about?
Oh, definitely, I can speak to the landscape architect to see. I would think if she looked at that, she might have looked at that concern, but I would definitely talk to her about it.
Yeah, we'd really like to get
Clear that up.
...informed about that. And the last question I have right now is the stucco, low stucco retaining wall at the north side of the property, is that one of the colors that is on the
It would match the architecture, stucco.
Do we have that board?
Yeah, it's right over. It's with, can you pass the board?
That would be which one of the colors that we see there? That would be what, like one of the greens at the
It could be one of the greens. I don't think specifically it's been selected as to what color, but we would end up using one of the naturalistic colors to kind of blend in to the
Okay, so it won't, it won't be just
It won't be white.
(laughing) Yeah, I'd like to, like to see that's noted and committed to on the plan also. Thank you.
Tom, no questions?
Yep, no questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Well then, is there anybody else from the applicant that would like to speak to the commission? Okay, thank you. We'll then invite other people who would like to come, if anybody would like to address the commission on this item.
Marguerite Schuster, 675 Mount Wilson Trail. Well, the inexorable march of imposing regrettable houses up the hill has begun, and I understand that we are helpless to stop it. All we can do, and I beg you to try to do it, is to reduce its impact not just on the one Carter property, but on the whole ethos of our community, so charmingly captured in the recent Los Angeles Magazine Small Town profile. The mixed eclectic style of our town is an essential aspect of its character, wholly at odds with the homogeneous developments of pretentious, high-end houses. We know what these developments look like, not just at the beginning, but a decade or more down the pike. All we have to do is look at the surrounding communities. Not to put too fine a point on it, they don't look anything like Sierra Madre, or what Sierra Madre has traditionally looked like, and what is still cherished and admired even by outside journalists. We have an ever-decreasing margin for avoiding disastrous assimilation. We need to be clear that their visual representations offered by the developer, which look green and spacious, are egregiously false. Just look at how close the newly cleared lot above Lot 22 really is, and how little space there is for anything resembling, say, mature trees. That the lot below Lot 22 has not yet been cleared rather obscures the problem. What we are actually facing is the start of a sort of artificial canyon bounded on both sides by big buildings. Speaking of trees, the Arborist's report has a tone lacking conviction. He asserts that he thinks the house could be built, which would spare the oaks and sycamores, but he does not say that this house would, nor could he. If he saw the location of the story poles rising between major limbs of sycamores, that he gives a barely-passing grade. They are already drought-stressed and surely cannot survive the heavy pruning that would be necessary. And the protective margin around the trunks that he said would be needed is not accommodated by the current plan. Nor would it seem, as has already been mentioned, that the irrigation plan would properly spare the oaks. Mitigation is not an adequate alternative, not least because there is only a five-year span in which replacement trees need to be kept alive or replaced. We are dealing with slow-growing trees, for goodness' sake, not Jack's beanstalk. The trees currently on the property cannot be equaled by a replacement tree in the lifetime of anyone in this room. In short, the relentless carelessness of this developer with respect to the natural environment and soon-to-be-lost loveliness of the setting is deplorable in every respect. Please do what you can to curb it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Greg Harmon, 650 Baldwin Court. I probably won't speak as eloquently as the previous speaker, but I'll do my best. First comment I'd like to make is I'd like to reiterate some of the comments you made regarding the trees. There's some conflicts in the report that I can see. On the executive summary, for one, it states there are three sycamore trees and one oak that need to be protected, yet there's clearly five sycamores and two oaks. They may not all be on the property, per se, but they all need to be protected. They're in groves themselves, so I'd like to make sure that's addressed. Couple things regarding the drip lines and such. Looks to me like the driveway, your point about permeable pavement, is under the drip line. The garage looks to be under the drip line. How do you build a basement without bringing heavy equipment in there, which the Arborist says should not be done? Again, concerns about how you preserve those sycamore trees there. Secondarily, or thirdly, the same comment. The Arborist clearly did not have the plans before him when he did this report. He said, "I believe a house could be built," but he did not have the plans, and he clearly stated that. So I think it would be appropriate for him to go back with plans in hand and make sure this is sufficient for the health of those trees. My second thing here is, what was my second thing? Again, back to the trees. I'm curious how this is all monitored. I know there are Arborists that are supposed to be on-site at times, but I am concerned there were trees cut in the past inadvertently, and they were, whoops, sorry about that. So I don't know how that is protected against, but again, it's added advantage to the developer to get rid of some of these trees that may be in the way, and I would hope that they would not do that. I don't think necessarily that's their intent. But again, how do you monitor that? How do you prevent it from happening? And the last thing I'd like to say is, you know, I haven't heard or saw anything in the plan regarding fencing around the property. There is some language I've seen in the settlement agreement in the past about the type of fencing that had to be done, and what's approved, what's not approved, and walkways and pathways for animals must be abided by as well. So I don't know where that belongs. It seems to me it should be part of this plan, just to your point about you don't want a white stucco retaining wall, you certainly don't want a white five-foot fence around the property as well. So, let's go ahead.
Thank you. It's my understanding that we have no perimeter fencing. We have the small retaining wall and the fencing on the walk going down, but we have no perimeter fencing, and that was one of the things I checked for. Thank you.
Could I ask the last speaker, are you aware of any, since you live right above the site, are you aware of any animal migration paths that might be affected by this project?
Oh, they're all over. They're on the side around my house, or they go down through the bottom of my house onto They're really all over, right? So you can walk by there and you'll see the paths. You can see them less so now that it's recently been weeded. You know, prior to that, you could see them very clearly.
Okay. Well, we're not, there's no fencing being offered in here.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, does the applicant want to address any of those concerns raised? Or are you good?
In response to some of the concern about the Arborist, what we could have is, the Arborist take another look. He has looked at it in terms of the plan that we have, but we can have him take another look and just make sure that there's no concerns that might exist.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Would you like to start? Manish, you want to start us off?
I mean, to begin with, I think some of my concerns are in line with staff's concerns. As much as I can appreciate sort of wanting to echo the eclectic fiber, nature of Sierra Madre in sort of design, I think, you know, you kind of set your path when you chose to pursue a craftsman sort of approach to this design. You know, in simple terms, I think in the front, you know, the asymmetry on that upper portion, I don't think it's really working for you. It's one of those things where it would have to be even a greater contrast for it to look intentional. It looks kind of like a mistake in the field. I mean, I think, I think in the front, that really wants to be symmetrical or centered. I think there's no relationship as you move around to the south where you did that same maneuver on the south side. I think there, it still looks kind of funny, but I think it's more understandable because it's working with the parallel roof it's working with the parallel roof pitches that you have. But again, I don't, when you say that that maneuver or that move makes it more contemporary, I don't, you know, I don't get that. I think it's kind of a weak gesture there. I think it would be better served sort of recalibrating that and centering that, or re-looking at that element. I think the most problematic element for me is sort of that northern, I guess you can call it the northern roof pitch. And I know sort of the hillside, it's kind of an illusion here on these elevations because it's as if it's on a platter and you're not seeing the hillside behind it, but to me, I think, you know, just looking at it, you kind of see a lot of roof, you know, that maneuver. And it sort of, to me, doesn't fit quite with the craftsman. I mean, one of the signature elements of sort of a craftsman house are sort of these exposed joints and connections and details, but also the low-slope roof structures, you know. I mean, a lot of them had long eaves and the roof structures, I mean, it wouldn't be unheard of to see something that's two and 12, you know, and even shallower. I think this trick here isn't really working in your favor. I think it would actually be better if you broke that somewhere along that runway of roof and saw a little bit of wall there, you know, on that element. I think it's actually elongating sort of that whole side. So I've got some issues with that. I don't think that's resolved from my perspective. And I know programmatically, the stairs are kind of in that area, and so you're trying to maneuver around a lot of things where you need height, but it just looks, it's not bringing the house down, it's actually creating an eye line and a sight line that's moving up on that side. So I have some issues with that. As far as the garage, to me, I mean, it is set back from the front, but from the front porch, I should say. It doesn't, it's not causing me a ton of heartburn, but I mean, it would be great to see that, have that differentiation even more, so it was more tucked behind the front entry element. So those are some of the main concerns I have. I mean, overall, I think this is a strong approach as far as the design. I mean, I know previously, this parcel in design had several iterations. I think before Monterey, it was like a French country, something, you know. It went through a couple of iterations, and I remember the Monterey style very vividly, and that had a lot of issues. I think this is working here as far as a start point. I just think some of these elements need to be massaged that could work to your advantage in sort of making the house seem even, reducing the scale and the mass a little bit around the perimeter. I think some of the choices in the roof forms, you know, you may want to look at. You may want to look at introducing sort of that shed form that you have on the ground level coming out. Maybe that gets reintroduced at the top so that on those elevations on the north and south, it's not so blunted with a gable profile, but you bring it down with sort of a shed profile, you know, on those pieces that are sticking out. That may be an approach. So I think there's several ways to look at that, and I think it needs a little more attention to detail around the perimeter. So those are kind of my initial comments.
I would like to concur with just about everything that Mr. Desai said. I'm not going to repeat it, although I do want to emphasize that I think that the, if you want to talk about craftsmen, that the roof overhangs are very, very tepid in comparison to the roof overhangs that you saw in real craftsmen from 100 years ago. All of that said, I have two further things that I would like to focus on. One is that I'm concerned about the very, very dark roof and the fact that it appears to be dark beyond the overall coloration of the canyon, and it's also a little bit out of our scope, but it is also very, very heat-absorbing and not a very, very good choice from a sustainability standpoint. And I would like to see if there are other lighter-colored roofs that could reduce the heat load that would be within their palette, which I think the palette is generally, pretty much okay for up there. What I would like to focus on has to do with the site and the protection of the trees. Mr. Harmon, your comment about the heavy equipment and so forth to dig the basement, the protection of the, especially that group of sycamore trees, this is all very, very important. And projects that really are going to take a lot of care usually have much, much stronger provisions written in about exactly how these trees are going to be protected. The deep history, as many people in the audience know, the deep history of this overall development is there have been a tremendous number of beautiful trees that have been destroyed since this project started. There are comparatively speaking, precious few of them left at this point, and those are really nice sycamores over there. And I think that we need to see much more specific information and specific safeguards for those trees, plus the other important, the oak trees and so forth. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. So I also concur on that northern roof. I think we need to break that up. It's just, it's a lot of roof. It's a lot of roof. The garage, so a lot of these findings that I was, that I'm about to bring forward are from the Stonehouse Design Guide. That is part of what we have to look at with regards to how this is designed. The garage is just not set in enough, in my opinion. The stone facade on that corner that wraps the corner is almost exactly the diagram of what you're not supposed to do in the design guide, where it changes on one plane. I think it looks great on the front. I have concerns that it just stops on the side. To the point about the eclectic nature of the home, it didn't work for me either. There were, things just look out of balance because they're not centered where you expect to see them. The windows on the master bath, the master bedroom and bath two are all spaced such that they create this unproportioned space where you expect to see another window, and there's just an expansive wall. So the ratio seems offset to me, and you create these large areas of area that are not proportioned well. The AC unit's supposed to be fully enclosed. I didn't see it noted on the plan. The trash enclosure's supposed to be completely enclosed. It looked like it wasn't on the plan. The retaining wall at that north, northwest corner just turns at a very sharp 90-degree turn. The guidance is to follow the natural evolution of the hill or the contour of the hill, and instead we have this jutting 90-degree turn. And the front columns that you see look almost exactly like the style guide of what not to do in the design guide, and so I had concerns with those. And wanted to echo that, wanted to see more on the arborist report, a better, clearer arborist report that spoke to the concerns that have been voiced.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I don't want to add too much more than that. I remember being in this, having a project come before us once before, and I think the biggest problem with this lot is the problem with a lot of these lots is where do you put the house? And where do you put the garage? I'd say the garage is the biggest headache because there isn't really a place to put it in the back. That's always been the biggest problem. So I understand their difficulty. I think they, you know, made a valiant effort to try and hide it as much as possible with the porch. I think maybe it could be staggered back further, but then we had the tree issues. But I would just sort of reinforce what they were talking about with pushing the garage back. Other than that, some of the, most of the limitations are based on the building pad, and so they could be changed. I think some of the other structural things, I'm not a big eclectic critic, but I thought that was one of the problems before with the bulk and mass was not breaking up the roof line. And the previous architect came back with several iterations, tried to sort of break it up and make it more variegated, and, I mean, they did that, but then it seemed to made it more complex, and then it made more complex issues with the bulking and mass that it just didn't look right. So I think overall, if they could just stagger the garage back farther, that would be my major concern, other than the other things that have been added.
Okay. So in my time on the planning commission, this will be the third plan for this lot that we've gone over, and having put a lot of time and energy in the first two, I want to make sure that we are successful here. I do want to commend the applicant on a couple of things. And in the past, we've brought up the fact that they can use a basement underground facility, and it's nice to see one finally appear in a plan. Although in this plan, I believe the basement that they've drawn is underutilized. It's just an empty room, an empty space. I think there's, you could do a few more things with it. I think you could also include maybe some of the building mechanics in it and clean off the, get them off the first floor. I also want to commend that the applicant for the design and color palette, in the past, we've looked at designs and color palettes that were very difficult to swallow and just were too bright and stood out. So you're, the fact that you've chosen a craftsman design, I think, is a good avenue, although I'm not sure that the execution is there yet. And the fact that you've chosen a lot more natural colors than the bright white we had before last time, I think, is an improvement. I'd also like to commend staff for their list of concerns, and that's where I want to start with the applicant, that the concerns raised by staff, I think, are absolutely on point and need to be addressed. The asymmetry on the front and the south side don't seem to do anything for your design. It looks as if somebody was, it was designed, the house was designed from the inside out as opposed to the outside in. Those windows placement was designed because when you stood inside the room inside, it made sense, but it doesn't make sense when you look at the house and how the house presents. The other problem with how the house presents is that the dominant feature is the garage doors. And there's a number of references in the design guidelines on what should be done with that, and I think the applicant needs to go back and look at, what do you want to do about the fact that, the first thing you see when you look at the house is the garage doors. I think there's some other things that need to be done. The applicant is aware that the house needs to conform to our water standards, and gray water is part of it, but that gray water is not shown on any design or the irrigation design. So I can't approve anything that doesn't, is not in compliance with our code. The color of the stucco on the wall going around the basement access needs to be, needs to show up on the design as being the right color and how that works. And also, the plot plan needs to go back to the arborist, and the arborist needs to report on how those trees are going to be saved and preserved, having seen the plan for the house. It seems like there was a disconnect between what the arborist was reporting and what was given to us in terms of plot plans. And I'll stop there.
Okay. Yesterday, when I was visiting the project site, I ran into a longtime Sierra Madre resident who told me that they wish that all the houses on one Carter could be one-story. I've also heard a lot of people say they wish there'd be no development up there. That's not going to happen. We all need to come to grips with the fact that houses are going to be built on one Carter, and most likely are going to be big, two-story houses. The city has no legal right or authority to block development or to make houses small or one-story. In fact, the settlement agreement that the city council approved allows for bigger houses than, that are allowed under our current zoning code. I'm not personally opposed to large houses. This planning commission recently approved two large houses, two large, well-designed houses, but I think that's how, those houses differed from this house. This house is not well-designed, and we do have the authority under the Hillside Management Zone and the Stonegate Design Guidelines to require good design. I think my overall view of this house is more negative than some of my fellow commissioners who went through the prior iterations, and I think that's more testament to how horrible the prior designs were. And I think people have sort of been beat down, and they see the improvement, but they don't see that if this was the first house we came, they came to us, they wouldn't be so happy. I have a laundry list of issues, a lot of, some of them have already been discussed, but I want to impress on the applicant that these aren't just a lot, a thing of, a list of things you tweak, and it's a good house, we fix these things and then we're good to go. This is not a good design, I don't think. I think we really need to think about how it works, and this laundry list of issues are examples of why it's not a good design. Really, I think this is a sort of standard house design that's appropriate for flatlands. I really like to hear the concept of eclecticism and asymmetry and fitting in with Sierra Madre, but that really didn't seem to work to me. It seemed more haphazard, or maybe, as the architects have told us, it's because it was program-driven, and that's how the outside resulted. But I don't feel like this is responsive to the site or the hillsides. I don't think it blends in. I don't think it fits. I think you can find a perfect example of the way this thing talks to me in the arborist report, where there's these glorious, natural, protected oak and sycamore trees that are rated a D-plus or a C-minus because the crowns are unbalanced and asymmetrical. That's what makes them great. Sierra Madre is unbalanced and asymmetrical, especially the hillsides. You know, if you want straight, flat, boring, put this house somewhere else. What we want, and I'll quote from the Hillside Management Zone, is "A project that is sensitive to the unique characteristics of the hillside, is designed to fit the existing landform, is designed to minimize adverse visual impacts, and provides alternate approaches to conventional flatland development practices. The siding, shape, materials, and colors of all buildings and structures shall be designed and maintained so as to blend into the natural landscape." So what we have instead is what's called a contemporary craftsman bungalow, which is, sounds pretty as a style, but really doesn't mean anything because it's not really a craftsman, and you can modify it for whatever you want. So that, to me, just doesn't work. What I really think is we need a fundamental change of outlook and approach. We need to think about this from a hillside house that fits in this location. And that doesn't mean necessarily you have to start over from scratch. Maybe you can reuse a whole bunch of it. I'm not really an architect. I just don't think what's going on there works now. I also think that the application itself has a lot of inconsistencies and inaccuracies and things that just haven't yet come together. It's sort of a rough draft. And so part of this stuff is, there's going to be, need to be project revisions. Part of it, we're just going to need to see things together that work, like that wall issue, whether it's a wall or a fence are open. issue, where it's, whether it's a wall or a fence are open. So let me list some of my issues. We have, in the legend on the plans, a total of the amount of paving that's permeable are impermeable, but on the plans, it doesn't indicate which parts are permeable and impermeable. I'd like to see that. As we talked about, as others talked about, the garage floor plate is, or the garage is even with the floor plate. The only thing it's recessed from is the porch. And if you look at the stone gate design guidelines, B-2, 3, B-2, 4, and figure 2, you will see the garages are much farther pushed back. In fact, you look at those garages, and there's more house in the front than there is in the back. Here, almost the entire house is, is back of the garage. So the garage needs to get pushed back farther. Or you need to redesign the whole thing, but you're probably not going to do that. So you need to push the garage back. If you want to keep the same program, that means you're going to push the whole, that whole side of the house back, and you're going to lose some backyard. Or you need to reduce the, the floor area and send some of that down below into the basement. I like the porch. It's a very craftsman idea, but I think it adds to the appearance of bulk and mass, especially with the way it's configured with that giant roof. The roof, the roof is just weird to me, that, that giant slope. I think the dark color maybe is appropriate if it didn't have that huge expanse, but it emphasizes the darkness. And so, I don't know if you want to break it up more, or use lighter, or both, or something. The windows are similar to that, in that you have the strange pieces. Some are really large, which is not craftsman-like. I don't understand really the two types of siding. Maybe that speaks more to the architects, but to me, it just, I just like, it seems like we picked randomly from palettes. But, you know, I, I've seen other places where, where you do siding in stucco, so you try to differentiate. So I get the concept, but it just, it doesn't seem to work. But maybe it could. Unlike that, the fake rock facade is horrible. It does not work. It doesn't look like local or natural rock. It doesn't, as required, blend in with the natural landscape. What you could do is use real rock, like, you know, stone gates, like the name of your development. If you're not going to do that and use real rock that's local, then don't put fake rock on it. It just doesn't work to me. I also have big issues with the location of the, of the two-story massing. I like the fact that the first, I mean, the second story is a lot smaller than the first story, and so you get portions where there's this appearance of first story, one-story part, especially in the front. But you've got the flat two-story stuff on the south elevation, and that really looms over the neighbor to the south. Whereas your elevation of your pad is much lower than the guy to the north. And so if you flip that, you know, I, I think the, the appearance of the massing would fit in more with the slope of the hillside, and it wouldn't give as much problem to the neighbor to the south. And I think, when I went to the site, and I, and I sat at the site, and I looked at the story poles, that, that became really apparent to me, in a way that wasn't just from looking at the elevations, because, you know, I'm not an architect and don't imagine it as well. Another issue is that the height on the plans is measured just from finished grade, and the settlement agreement allows an exception to the hillside ordinance that requires that to be from natural or existing, but that, that's only for some lots and not this one. It may be this is all a cut lot, and so that doesn't matter, but I'd like to have that calculation noted, so we can make sure of that. We've talked a little bit about the walls and the fences. I'm very happy that there's no perimeter walls or fences. That's really good. But the elevations, perspective views, and plans aren't consistent, because we have one that shows a wall, one that shows two, but still, I'd like to have those consistent so we can really see what's going on. Also, the retaining wall, I'm not a big fan of at all. I'd rather just have, you know, the slope be what it is. I understand, on the north side, you want to cut that back so you can have a walk around, around the house, but I don't understand the part on the west that jogs to the south. You know, that's your front yard. You've got a little slope difference. Just live with it. It's hillside. It, to me, it's just screaming that I'm trying to make this land flat. I, I really don't even see the need for it. If you are going to do it, it should be curved, but why even have that? I mean, just have it on the north side. The landscape plan, as discussed, it shows planting and irrigation underneath the protected trees. The arborist says you shouldn't have irrigation under the protected trees, and he includes the sycamores. The arborist report also says, quote, "Since I was only provided with a topographic survey plan and not a site plan, I can only speculate on potential development of the site." Even though this report was commissioned a month and a half ago. I mean, you guys could have given them the plan. So the, the, the arborist needs to get the plans, including the house plans, the irrigation plan, and the landscape plan, and make sure they all work, because we don't want to just have inconsistencies in the plans, and then something, there was, there's a condition of approval that says, oh, you'll work it out. I really don't have a lot of faith that that's going to work out so well. Also, there's lawn in the backyard. That's not water-efficient landscaping. Why do we have to have any lawn at all? I, I, I'm happy there's no lawn in the front, but really? The gray water issue has been brought up. Why aren't we going to use the gray water, capture it, the roof runoff, and use it for irrigation of, of especially the exotic plants? You, you don't want to necessarily do that on the native plants. The Drayage plant does show an infiltration basin that appears just to be for storm runoff, which is under the driveway. So first, we want to make sure this isn't going to have a problem with the sycamores, as the basement isn't, hopefully. But why are we irrigating the driveway? Why don't we use that water to irrigate plants? It doesn't seem holistically designed and thought out. We also have a neighborhood analysis that's at 1,000 feet, which seems to capture a huge chunk of the town and does us little good. It also serves the floor area inaccurately. It's listed as 2,672 instead of 2,740. It also doesn't note that the garage is bigger than standard garages, or talk about the garage sizes of the other houses. So the neighborhood analysis is pretty much next to worthless. I would really rather have a neighborhood analysis that was just at 500 feet, and use the right square footage, and added the extra garage size so we could compare across. Finally, the cultural resources memo, which is important for the CUP that we're going to find, is dated in 2013, and reviews a totally, a house with a totally different architectural style. So, and that needs to be updated for the current process, so that we can really rely on it. And that's done by Sapples. I have a lot of faith in them. I, I think that shouldn't be a problem, but really, we, I have a hard time making findings based on something that's totally inapplicable. So, you know, I, I think that's where we're at. You know, just to let everyone in here know, we, one of the two large houses that was recently approved that I mentioned, their first iteration, to, to be kind, was not ready for prime time. And we gave them a lot of constructive criticism. And to their credit, they went home, they really thought about it, not just as checking boxes off a list, but really thought about the, the concepts and making it fit. And they came back with a really nice project, really well-designed. And I was quite happy to approve that project, and I would like to be in that same place with this house, and not in this place where the horror stories that I've heard about going through eight different iterations. Let's do one or two more iterations and get this thing in a good place and approve it. So that's, that's my story to the applicant. I hope we can all find it that way, and I'm happy to, if anybody has other concepts they'd like to provide, we can do that.
I mean, part of our charge was to make sure we give very specific feedback, which I think we have. It'd be nice to either summarize that or make sure that it's listed, so.
Well, I, I've seen the applicant's architect over there taking notes, so I, I hope he's got it. I, I take it that the applicant is interested in revising the plan and bringing it back to us? And we have, do we have a date that we have in mind that might work for that?
Richard McDonald, on behalf of the applicant, the answer to your question is yes. We would like to be able to continue to work with staff, but we don't want to just kind of go off by ourselves. We'd like to be able to have staff, to the extent necessary, listen to the tape, make sure they've got all your comments. We'd like to meet with them. Some of the things you're talking about are pretty straightforward, updating a cultural resources report, bringing in the arborist to make a number of explanations, showing a little more detail on the plans. But some of the bigger, broader points that you've mentioned would be ones we'd want to sit down with staff and walk through. To the extent, I don't know the addresses of the two big houses that you approved recently, to the extent staff's aware of those, or you can tell us, that's always helpful, too.
Sure. I don't think those houses are necessarily going to give you any design help, because they, for one, they weren't really hillside. But I'm just saying that we're, we're not afraid to approve a house, a good look, a good-looking big house, and so we hope we can work.
No, I'm not saying we would copy them. I'm just saying, we, to the extent that we're able to see befores and afters and how they did, your last point, which was, take a step back and look holistically.
Yeah, certainly staff will work with you on that. So what's the, how long do you think you're going to need? Do we have a tentative date for this?
I was looking at if this is adequate time for the applicant to return. Possibly November 15th could be one date, or if he needed more time, December 6.
December 6. We want to make sure we have enough time to come in and meet.
So we have a motion to continue this to December 6?
So moved.
I'll second.
You have a question, Joe?
I, I do. I wanted to make a couple of hopefully constructive comments to the applicant as appropriate.
Yeah, let's do that now, yeah, before, before, before we vote. We're done, then.
Yeah, okay. I just, what I wanted to mention was, I liked hearing the, the references to bungalow. I would like to note that bungalows in California history generally didn't get this big, all right? However, there are some, there are some really wonderful architectural references out there on, on bungalow, which I think would, would support and really help further develop the character of, of what you're doing here. One of, one of the good ones is "The California Bungalow" by Professor Robert Winter. It's, it's available. There's, there's some other ones.
My college teacher, Oxford College.
The, I, I really would like to, to, to see the response, not only to the natural landscape, the trees before, but in terms of the shape, I would like to make a personal comment as, as an architect. When I have projects like this, I do a model, and the model is being developed with shapes in mind, and it includes a lot of the, the surrounding landform, and I do them very, very simply, not like model railroading, but just chipboard, nicely detailed chipboard. And I'm able to get to the point where you see very, very evidently how it fits into the, it really fits into the landform. I've, I've had instances where, for instance, the, the person in Vincent's seat has said to me afterwards, you know, after the commissioner saw that model, you wouldn't have had to say another word about whether it fit in or how it fit in. I, I would like to see that kind of development here. I think that we're doing an awful lot of imagining of what would happen three dimensionally, but some, some good model work, you know, and sketch model development, so that we can really see what the landforms are, are like, I, I think would be really, really in favor of this project.
I mean, as bizarre as it sounds, we've had one recently where they brought a physical model, and it actually.
One of the two houses that I mentioned, they brought a model in and put it right there, and you, you could just totally see it, where, I mean, again, there's, some, some people have a lot more experience in imagining plans, but it's really simple to imagine what a mo, what a house is going to look like when you have a model of it.
And the architect was able to tie the building to the surrounding plants and contours, and point out at how it, everything worked together. And that was, it, it helped, it was, it was a major contributor toward the success of the project. You know, my, my feedback is, I can't approve a project where if it's, if it says that there's going to be gray water irrigation, and the plans come in and there's no mention of that, I, I, I can't live with that disconnect. If it says that there should not be any planting underneath the oaks and the sycamores, and the plan comes in that shows that, I can't approve that, because that tells me that there's some kind of disconnect, and in our, in my personal experience, that when that happens, usually the, the oaks and the sycamores lose, because those are the plans that get given to the guy at the field, and they build it the way the plans are. So it's important to me that the plans reflect the guidance and the rules.
So towards that end of three-dimensional modeling, and whether or not we can picture that, and, and to the chair's point about how high that side of the house is looking down on its, its neighbor lot, every one of the perspectives that we've, or, every one of the concepts that we've been given only shows the house to the north. We're worried about the house to the south, and there's no, and I understand that there's no model for that house. There's also no model for this house that's been approved yet, right? So we don't know that that's what it's actually going to look like either. So either let's remove them both, or let's put something on there that gives us some idea of how far this is looking down to the house next door.
You done? Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we will move on to oral communication from the audience, if anybody would like to address the commission on anything that's not on the agenda, having skipped your first time.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the planning commission reports. Planning commissioners have any comments?
I have nothing.
Okay, and we'll bring it back to staff.
We have two projects that are scheduled for the October 18th meeting. One of them is the 62 Carter Avenue project that is returning.
Wow, quick turnover.
And also, we have a, a variance that we're going to be considering as well.
Okay.
Just also to remind you, we do have a special city council meeting with the planning commission scheduled for October 23rd. That's a joint meeting with both bodies.
Okay, great.
Those are all my comments.
What time was that?
That's going to be at the regular 6:30 PM meeting of the city council on Tuesday.
And they're going to get a kids' table and put it out there for us to.
Look down.
Yeah. Okay, with that, we will adjourn the meeting until our next meeting at October 18th. Okay, with that, we will adjourn the meeting until our next meeting at October 18th.